So it is December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, it's four o'clock, and we call this Lacy City Council meeting to order, and let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag. The United States.
And to the Republican states.
One nation. One nation.
Indivisible.
Invisible.
Just. For all.
A more. So we have a published agenda. I don't think there's any changes to the agenda, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
Move and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick discussion, just briefly, that Lacy city council retreat minutes, that seems odd to put that in the consent agenda, is that what it should be?
I could answer real quick. So they're just, they're just minutes of the council retreat that should have been done a long time ago, and so we're just wanting to make sure that the minutes are officially approved by council.
Oh, okay.
But we just, we just happened to miss it way back when?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, with that, is there any other discussion? And it's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda items. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, then that motion carries unanimously. And then, next up, under Public Recognitions and Presentations, we'll get our youth council report, and Abigail is going to be giving us that report from the youth council. Let's bring her on. If you could unmute yourself, Abigail. And I'll turn it over to you.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Abigail Sorry. I'm a sophomore at North Thurston High School, and I'm a member of the Lacy Youth Council, as well as the council's project manager. And I just wanted to share with you all about all the exciting things that the youth council has been planning recently. So one of the things that we're doing is we're planning our youth summit that's going to take place in May. And the focus of our summit is that we really want to showcase jobs, volunteer opportunities, and internships and employments for teens. And we also want to use this opportunity to display local businesses and have our summit be like kind of in an expo type of format. And additionally, we are working on expanding the youth response slash teen response and input in the Lacy Park Survey. And we really want more teens and more youth to respond so that we can so that we can get their input and what they want to see in the Lacy Parks and how it can be and how they can use that parks as a resource for them as well.
Does anyone from the council have any questions?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Do you have a question, Councilor?
Not a question, just a comment. That's your expo sounds like an amazing project, so congratulations and looking, really looking forward to seeing that happen.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, we really look forward to that, and it's such a big issue right now. There's such a shortage in in labor, and so connecting, of course, our youth to jobs is going to be really important, and it's going to be a great joint venture between the the parks and the youth councils. Scott, you got something?
Well, yeah, Abigail, you mentioned the survey. How can the youth participate in that survey?
Oh, so the youth can access that survey at the website, and the website is
And we really do encourage our youth to to log on to that and fill out that survey. That'd be really great, and we need more youth participation, and so I'm sure the youth council is trying to push that out as well, so. Thank you so much, Abigail.
Thank you.
Yeah, Andy, if I can, I just want to say thank you, Abigail, for all your willingness to serve and get other youth involved in their city. Appreciate you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So on to our next item, which is public comment. We did not have anyone sign up for public comment this evening. We did receive several written public comments that will be a part of the record. And so with that, we're going to go on to our proclamation. Before we get started here on this proclamation, which is something that's really near and dear to my heart, I just want to make sure that council has received their their order of what should be saying the proclamation. But Jose Gutierrez is someone who I've admired for a very long time. I first met Jose when I was a senior and he was a freshman. And even back then, Jose was special. Everyone knew he was special. And he was one of these, one of these amazing leaders that have come out of Lacy that has worked his, worked his entire life giving back to his community. And in just a second, we're going to see a clip from back when he was in in high school, and he was received, already receiving awards. But Jose is, was one of a kind, and he recently passed away. And we lost just a tremendous hero in our community. And there's several things that we're going to be doing to recognize Jose, not only with this proclamation, but but going forward in our community, because he he inspired so many and has helped so many. And let's just get started real quick with the the clip from back when he was in he was in high school and received this award.
Q thirteen congratulates our May Q Kid winner, eighteen-year-old Jose Gutierrez of Lacy. Jose is a good student who's on three school sports teams. He's won many awards and was voted most inspirational by his teammates. Jose is also a student council member. One of his goals is to foster communication between teens and police to help solve gang, drug, and violence problems in the community. He is also active on two city youth advisory boards and is an advisor for the Lacy City Council. He speaks out on teen issues and gives the city council his feedback on city programs and problems. Thanks, Jose, for getting involved.
And so that that just shows you, that was at the beginning, when he was in high school, already giving back to his community. And his sister is here with us today, and I will accept this formal proclamation, and everyone has their assignments, and I'll get started with it. The Save Lacy Official Proclamation. Whereas Jose Salvador Gutierrez Jr., DJ Levajay, Lacy Community Resident and River Ridge High School graduate, passed away on November fifth, twenty twenty-one, and
Whereas at the early age of twelve, Jose started volunteering at the Evergreen State College's Chaos Olympia Radio Radio as a DJ and continued to volunteer and collaborate with them until his passing. This is where he showcased his passions and talents for hip-hop music, and
Whereas Jose was a lifelong learner, receiving a Bachelor of Arts from the Edward R. Murrow School of Communications with a triple major and distinctions in TV film production, media management, and journalism, as well as a Master's of Education from Washington State University. Additionally, he received a Master of Business Administration with a distinction in global leadership and diversity from Western Washington University and a Master's in Environmental Science and Public Administration at the Ever, Evergreen State College, and
Whereas Jose Wallen Pullman founded the student organization Black Men Making a Difference and was instrumental in creating awareness and advocacy for women's safety on campus, receiving a restorative justice development certificate from Eastern Washington University, and
Whereas Jose worked as a producer at Thurston Community Media and was a mentor liaison for the North Thurston School District. While working as an adjunct professor at the Northwest Indians, Indian College, Jose worked extensively within the Skali and Puall tribes to empower youth, and
Whereas Jose was a chapter leader, minister, and member of the Temple of Hip-Hop Organization from nineteen ninety-six until his passing. He was also a member of groups two oh six Zulu and the Universal Zulu Nation. Jose also founded the nonprofit Hip-Hop for the Homeless in Washington State, and
Whereas Jose served his community in countless roles, using his gifts as a man of faith, an educator, advocate, certified mediator, founder, leader, entertainer, philosopher, and innovator.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacy, on behalf of Lacy City Council, do hereby proclaim every December nineteenth, as Jose Salvador Jr., or Gutierrez Jr., DJ Levajay Day in the City of Lacy, I encourage community members to celebrate the life of Jose, reflect on his contributions, and to exemplify a life lived to give back to others. And Jose's famous saying, winners train, losers complain, do your thing, bang, bang. And signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, December sixteenth, and I'll tell you what, my heart is, at once, it's bursting with pride and it's still broken for losing such an amazing, amazing man in our community, someone I respected so much and looked up to. Happy that his sister Stella is here to accept this proclamation. Stella, would you like to turn on your video and unmute yourself and like to say a few words? It's still unmuted.
Oh, gosh, you guys, I just want to say thank you so much. This is just, can't even keep it together. Just really listening and 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 and, and it is all true, and the people that knew him and that are still connected to him know that he led from all angles, that he used every gift that he had. And his gifts continue to give, and we're going to continue to make sure that that happens, that the legacy that he left for the community, not for himself, but for the community, just as our ancestors have left for us, continue to be accessible and serve as a model. He was a great brother and a great servant, and I'm just honored to be able to accept this proclamation today on his behalf. I'm honored to have lived in a city that has given so much to me. Lacy is my old stumping grounds, too. And I did accomplish a lot. My foundation, my passion for human services, my education background came from New Market, you know, allowing people opportunities to do things differently. New Century and Timberline, you know, these are our neighborhood and the people in the community love him. And our honor to have known him and our honor to be involved in whatever the city continues to you know, honor him with. We've talked about quite a few different things, and I think it's all possible, and I'm just, I'm just honored to bear witness to what one single person can actually do. It's amazing.
Do you want to talk a little bit about his birthday celebration coming up?
Yes, so we're hosting a celebration for him at South Puget Sound Community College, a school once again that I attended at the tender age of sixteen years old. I was able to get in there for the first running start. It was my running start. You know, the heck with high school. I could do my GED and go to school and be done with this thing. And so I had my own thing going on, and we're going to be celebrating there, and he was a professor there as well, teaching hip-hop and you know, they've opened up the campus to us to celebrate his birthday on the nineteenth. And the event will happen at one and end at four. We'll have open mic. Mayor Andy Ryder will be presenting, and we're just going to have fun, and we're going to, we're going to celebrate, truly celebrate his life and talk a little bit about what the Bang Bang Project is all about and educate folks on how to continue to be involved and continue his legacy with Black Hip-Hop, Hip-Hop for the Homeless, and some of the other things that he was so passionate about.
Thank you so much, Stella, and it's just, like I said, that's one of the biggest honors of my life to have known him and to have learned from him on how to be a, you know, a better leader and a better human being. And he was, he was one of the best I've ever known, so. We'll see you on Sunday, and thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you. Thank you, Malcolm.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is under Resolutions, Resolutions, Resolution eleven twelve, the remote participation at council meetings. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and council members. Couple items before you this evening. First off would be Resolution eleven twelve, which relates to remote participation at public meetings. And we all know that remote participation, as we're experiencing right now, has become pretty commonplace recently, and it's likely to continue into the future in some capacity, even after the pandemic. So what staff's recommending, recommending is some changes to the council policies and procedures manual. And these changes come in two separate chapters. One would be a new chapter, and this would be, these materials are in your packet, so I'm just going to highlight them here. Chapter seven point one one is a new chapter titled Remote Participation. It simply allows for remote participation. Clearly calls it out, provided satisfactory equipment's available, any council member can attend any public meeting remotely. It also calls out technical difficulties and indicates that if there are technical difficulties, which we have experienced in the past couple of years doing this, that they're to be addressed immediately. And then specifically, if such difficulties do occur during voting, it references the voting policy, which is Policy nine point one two. Now, that policy is also proposed to be amended by this resolution, so Policy nine point one two outlines how councils vote. Historically, well, and currently, votes need to occur by audible tone. So even without remote participation, what this policy's changing, or this, this resolution is changing, is that vote by audible tone is encouraged, and that would be the preferred way of voting. However, if unable, then a vote by hand signal would suffice. And the presiding officer is to summarize the vote after the completion of the vote. Now, Mayor Ryder consistently does that anyways, but it's just confirming that that is going to happen after every vote. If the presiding officer is unable to determine a vote, say there's technical difficulties specifically, and this would occur most likely in a remote participation circumstance where a screen's frozen, or, you know, maybe the council member was here, but now all of a sudden, you know, their box is no longer there, and where's this council member? So if there's some sort of technical difficulty and the, and the presiding officer cannot determine each council member's vote, then the council will pause the meeting, the presiding officer would pause the meeting for up to ten minutes. And the policy directs the council member that is experiencing the technical difficulties to first try to attempt telephonic contact with the council. And we have a system set up where, and I'm sure you all are aware of this, where you could just call in and at least establish contact with the council with the meeting telephonically. The vote could be cast by voice telephonically at that time, and once that telephonic connection is maintained, then that council member could attempt to reconnect to the meeting via that, whatever virtual platform was being used. You know, General Government Committee reviewed this on the twenty-third of November, and there was one change to staff's recommendation at that time, and that is that we had a vote by roll call in there, and the committee discussed it, and they determined that perhaps a roll call vote would take a little too much time, wouldn't be necessary, considering all the actions that council can't take at each meeting.
Talking about technical difficulties.
So the, the committee directed staff to remove the roll call requirement and then proceed with, with, with the, with the voting process as I've just outlined. So anyways, for tonight's purpose, we are recommending that council adopt Resolution one 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 two related to remote participation at council meetings, amending council policies and procedures. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's Mayor Greenstein?
First, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution, was it one 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 two?
Yep.
I second it. Cynthia Pratt.
And then I did have a question as well.
Okay, well, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution one 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 two relating to the remote participation at council meetings and amending the council policies and procedures. Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, just, you had mentioned that, and I was at that meeting, where we took, took off the requirement for the roll call vote. But I just wanted to make it clear, any, any council member at any time can ask for a roll call vote on anything. Still correct?
Of course, and it's so, yeah, it's just not going to be a mandatory part of the policies, whereas every vote council takes would have to be by roll call.
I'm glad that's not going to be part of it. I think that was, and, and, you know, the current mayor, Andy, does a good job of and most of our votes, as we all know, are unanimous anyway, and usually does make a point of saying, you know, that passes unanimously or whatever, so.
I've been, especially ever since we had the General Government meeting, I've been, I've been saying that in preparation just to train myself, you know, and most of the times, like, like Councilmember Greenstein says, that we have a unanimous vote. The times that we don't, I always try to slow down and make sure everyone's vote is captured and then repeat what the vote is at the end of it. And so, you know, through this process, for example, I will do my best to see I've captured everyone who's raised their hands and gives a voice vote. And then I will, you know, you know, say how the vote goes. If for some reason, like you froze, where I didn't hear you and you froze, and, you know, obviously, we'll have to be able to come back if that is the case. And, and then say, hey, I, I'm not sure if you caught me, my, you know, my video froze, but, you know, I voted yes or I voted no. And, you know, if it, we'll have to redo the vote if I, you know, if it hasn't been made clear, because that happens sometimes where it looks like you're on, but you've just froze up, and I, and I didn't quite catch it. So, you know, this is, of course, a learning process. I think we've done pretty good about this so far. This just puts it in our pulse, you know, our policies and procedures, you know, and gives us a little more direction. So we do like the fact that if things, you know, we have, we have what we're going to do next if if someone does freeze up, you know, we right in the middle of the vote, we didn't catch it, you know, we have some direction now and how we're going to get to solve that, that issue, so.
I guess I'd like to add, I'd like to add one more point of clarification. Historically, a council member, a council member's silence would be considered an affirmative vote, and that was by policy. So I mean, imagine we're all sitting in, in council chambers and, you know, a council member just didn't indicate one way or the other. That would count as an affirmative vote. And so in order to, we, we've removed that, and so now a council member must vote by voice or by hand signal for that vote to count. And, and there's language in the policy that if, if the mayor or the presiding officer cannot determine the vote, then it's, then it's just not going to count at all, whether affirmative or negative. So I just wanted to point out that slight slight clarification.
Yeah, and so that's a great clarification there, because, I mean, sometimes it takes you a couple of seconds to hit the unmute button, and, and I've done it. I've just not did a verbal vote because I knew it was a yes vote. Count it if you don't do it one way or another, so that, that's good for me.
So I just, yeah, if we can all get into a habit of just raising a yes, right? If I can see a hand movement on a yes or a hand movement on a no, then that, I think that will suffice. And so, you know, I, I'm, I, I rarely actually do a voice, a voice vote during the normal procedures where my silence has been an affirmative. But in this case, I will always say at the end what the vote is, and so that will confirm that as well, and I'll also try to get in a better habit of at least raising my hand on the yeses. So. Is there any other, any other questions? Then it's been moved and seconded to adopt this Resolution one 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 two relating to remote participation at council meetings and amending the council policies and procedures. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Then that motion passes unanimously. Then next up is Resolution, Resolution one 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 three to amend Resolution ten eighty-seven relating to temporary procedures a few days.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, we, we looked at the temporary procedures just last meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, and, and quick, quick reminder that ten eighty-seven was originally adopted at the onset of the pandemic, establishing temporary procedures for council meetings and, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of a lot of rules related to the City of Lacy. We've subsequently amended that, and now we're, we're recommending two additional. We've subsequently amended that, and now we're we're recommending two additional amendments. One would kind of clean up an action that you just took. I mean, Resolution ten eighty seven does encourage council members to attend telephonically. We now have a policy that allows for remote participation. And further, councils discussed recently the adding an in-person component and. And whether there it's encouraged for anybody to attend in person or not, I don't know that councils made that. But perhaps the encouragement to attend be removed from the procedures. Also, councils discussed the. They're not being in need to have a meeting at four P M. The temporary procedures do require. Or just do call out a four P M timeframe for council meetings and work sessions. So. The Resolution one, 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 three would amend Resolution ten eighty seven by. Removing those two temporary procedures. So if you had any questions, and I guess I'll add the. The final remaining temporary procedure that would be in place and that we're suggesting remain in place would be related to temporary signs.
Yes, temporary signs. Mr., can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution number one, 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 three, amending Resolution number ten eighty seven related. To temporary procedures to response to the COVID nineteen emergency.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilmember Greenstein.
And just just one question, I I got that it removes the four o'clock meeting, but does it set the new meeting time? I didn't hear that.
No, it doesn't, council member. That's a good, that's a good clarification. So a- assuming council adopts this, we're gonna. Immediately default to the L M C, which has seven P M timeframes. So. Up upcoming in your agenda, you'll see your under ordinances and other ordinance where I'll be presenting a a proposed change to that timeframe.
Okay, got it.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this Resolution one, 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 three. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 There any opposed? Then that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is under ordinances, Ordinance sixteen oh nine, the reserve designations. Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. For your consideration tonight is an ordinance that will designate certain reserves as committed. And as a reminder. Committed reserves are governmental resources that are constrained by the highest level of decision-making authority for the city, which, of course, is due to the city council. There is a full list of the committed reserves in the ordinance. We have discussed those in detail, both. With the Finance and Economic Development Committee, as well as the full council at a recent work session. We do believe that from a staff perspective that these reserves are consistent with your vision and your priorities for the city. Rather than go through all the various reserves, maybe I'll just summarize by. Providing both you, the council, and the audience, just some broad categories in which the council has set set priorities for. Those are economic development investments, social services, long-term financial planning, public safety, and parks and recreation. Also point out that the ordinance does authorize the city manager and the finance director to designate fund balances as assigned. And assigned reserves are a lower level designation, but still an important piece for our financial reporting. Also point out that during our discussions, the council did direct staff to prioritize. Three different categories for future designations, and those categories are affordable housing. The Great Qyo Park Master Plan implementation as well as energy conservation projects. So the staff recommendation is to adopt the ordinance, which will designate certain reserves as committed. And authorizes the city manager and finance director to assign or designate reserves as assigned. With that, I'll turn it back to the council for any questions you might have.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number sixteen sixteen oh nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen oh nine, which is our reserve designations discussion. So. Troy, at at the Finance and General Government Meeting, we we sort of went. Had a longer conversation about when's the proper time to be doing these reserve designations. Right, you know, we usually have done it, you know, right at the end of this year, like we're doing it now. But the question is that we had the Finance Committee is, is we really like to know what our reserve fund balances are. When we can close out the prior year, and we don't, we don't know that till about March of the of the next year. And so there was some discussion about looking at the reserves at that time, because that's when we'll actually close out our books and and know what. Our carryover reserves are going to be. So I I didn't see really any conversation about that in in this report.
Right into a a timing dilemma that we have. As you stated, we actually don't know what the reserves will be until we close out the fiscal year. And for us, as you pointed out, it doesn't really happen until the end of February, and it takes us some time to actually compile those numbers. But, you know, one of the easiest things to identify is we receive sales tax two months in arrears, so we won't. Actually know what the December sales taxes are until February, which, of course, is delay. So there we're kind of stuck between the timing of the council action to commit reserves, which. For us, from the accounting perspective, needs to happen before December thirty first. In order for us to properly report the council's priorities in our financial statements. And of course. That provides the dilemma of having not knowing the numbers until two months later. The other issue I would say in terms of timing is. We receive a lot of direction from the council during the budget preparation. Priorities change, new issues arise throughout the year. So there's another issue as we head into budget. Which is, of course, even further in advance of the knowing what the total reserves are going to be. So. To really address both, we'd have to take action twice a year to to do that. And. It would be my recommendation to stay with the December thirty first for sure, just so we can properly report this on behalf of the council.
And Councilmember Mallory?
Is it, okay, so it's easy enough to build an index and say, hey, let's let's use this percentage. And we know what what historically we received in the months of November and December, or even just December. And if we build an index and say, you know, hey, our our historical number is, you know, eighty thousand or. Say, let's just say a hundred thousand or whatever the case may be, and we can use that as a placeholder. Are you saying that? Is is that something that we could do, or is it just that the that number is no not actionable, because it's not, because it's incomplete?
Right, we would be making it an educated guess as to what would be available for the council to prioritize. You know, one solution in the future could be to take the two-month reserve. You know, make a a good estimate as to what additions we may have to reserves and have council take action on that. And in the event that we have overestimated, we could use that two-month reserve. But. There's also a council policy that states that we should have two months of operating reserves for cash flow purposes in emergencies. I wouldn't. Recommend that either, but that, I mean, that is an option.
Just maybe if you can clear this up for me, it'll make me feel better about this whole discussion. Do those reserves immediately become restricted if at the end of the year, right? So we've gone through the budget process. By March, we have closed out, there's reserves that come over. Once we finally close the year out. Are those are those reserves restricted at all, or do they not become restricted until we actually take action to restrict them?
Well, that's where the delegation of assigning reserves to the finance director and city manager come into play. So we identify those reserves based on, you know, council discussions and, you know, potential priority changes and. We assign reserves as well for the year in process, but we're able to capture those reserves that are unknown at this time. So. It's not as strong as a designation as obviously what the council is authorized to.
But you could, you could assign any reserves as restricted until they have council. Approval, right? And that would restrict reserves.
And that's a sensible we do. We we assign reserves throughout the year, depending on priorities and things that are identified through the budget process. And then a lot of the reserves that you're considering tonight to make committed are already, they're currently as of right now, assigned. And you're simply changing that designation to a stronger designation.
To a stronger designation, which is restricted. Scott?
Yeah, I just want to make a point of clarification, just because either myself or Troy assigns funds, they can't be spent. I mean, anything that would be a reserve that's even an assign, and if we wanted to go through the budget, that has to go back to your approval. So all it really is is sort of a temporary holding for those typical reserves. We typically will revisit those with you over the next six months. Then you'll decide if they become part of the new budget or if they become committed. So there's really no jeopardy of those reserves. I guess I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, it seems weird that we're we're basically waiting till the end of the next year to really. You know, assign those reserves. When we could restrict them or assign them by, once we close it out, you know, by March, April at the latest. And that really sets the tone on on what you're doing, right? You know, what your priorities are. But if you have to wait all the way till this month to do it, you've you've really, you missed, maybe. And you're right, we can come back and take from reserves and do budget amendments, but it, you know, it's not quite as smooth. Councilmember Cox?
I I noticed that Troy had mentioned the possibility of doing this twice a year. And if we were able to have. A budget session, maybe late spring, whatever makes sense in terms of before we actually begin. Serious planning on the next year's budget, I think that might allow us to establish what those priorities are and certainly. Account for things that have popped up that suddenly become new priorities that had not been anticipated. So.
I think that makes sense. If we did a quick works, if it was a if it was part of a work session, you know, March, or whenever that book flows out, we can. You know, put put a bow on the prior year's. You know, budget, and then at that point, we assign reserves or whatever we do want to do at that point. It just makes sense to do it a little bit earlier in the year than have to wait all the way to December.
Sure, I might suggest you do that at mid-year. That would give the council a time to conduct its retreat. I mean, a lot of different priority changes occur at that time, and, you know, it'd space things out about six months, which.
I think I think that would be, that would work. I just, I just, like I said, wait and all wait till December. It seems like it's a long time to wait to. For us, even for us to know how we closed out the prior year. So anyway. I think that makes a lot of sense. And that's something we can continue to talk about, but I I think should for middle of next year, it makes. Makes some sense. Is there any other discussion?
I didn't think you were going to spend the money, Scott.
Anything else? Then it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen oh nine, the reserve designations. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then the motion unanimously carries. Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
And back to Dave, Ordinance sixteen ten relating to council meeting times.
Thank you again. So as council is aware, for the last couple of years or since the pandemic. Our temporary procedures have been setting council meetings at four P M. Council's recent action removed that procedure, so now we're defaulting back to the L M C. Section two point zero four, which sets council meetings at seven P M. Previous discussion with council has led staff to believe that council may prefer a six P M meeting time. So before you is Ordinance sixteen ten related to council meeting times. Changing the times for both council meetings and work sessions to six P M. So staff recommendation is that council adopt ordinance sixteen ten.
Move to approve Ordinance sixteen ten, changing the council meeting time to six P M.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilmember Seven.
Thanks, Mayor. This works out perfect. As you guys know, I'm on Law and Justice. Council, so, and that starts, they just sent out the calendar for four thirty. So that should give me an hour and a half. Having them at the exact same time this past year was very difficult. And, you know, it's, this is, plus it's prime time, people that. Really want to make the meetings have easier time making them, and they're not, they don't have to stay up too late to, you know, affect their day job the next next morning. So thank.
Councilmember Cox?
I just a question for the city manager. Do we have a fairly aggressive plan for advertising this change of meeting time to the public? Because we're coming right up on holidays where people tend to be kind of checked out on these things.
We do. We'll use our communication channels to let people know there's a change. We also, as we mentioned before. We will use a utility billing to also make sure that all our, you know, residents know, as well as even one outside of our community know. I do, I mentioned this, sorry, I should have mentioned this last time. I mean, as you know, we're going to go to a hybrid model. I think that is going to be the new standard. I think that's just what it's going to be. So if you choose to watch from your home, that's great, that's more convenient. I will just ask for a little bit of grace from city council, as well as the public. As we start to go through the technology, I think we have a good plan going forward. But as you know, we need to have that tested in reality to make sure that we work out all the bugs.
Councilmember Miller?
I may have missed this, but when we're in the hybrid, are we going to have public comment in in hybrid mode too? And then we're gonna, they can, they can comment via video and.
And see. They'll have the option to either come to the podium if they want to be in person, or they can also register, and also we would have them on the the pull-down screen.
And and so, and for me, that is really the the difference here, right? Because we we've seen that actually we've had more public participation at, even at four o'clock than we did historically at seven o'clock. And so in in those terms, you know, for people who want to get public comment, it's it's not a big, not a big time commitment or anything else that. Log, you know, log on at the beginning of the meeting, give their public testimony, and it not affect their their day in it. However, the the biggest change here is there's going to be a changeover on our council. And this four o'clock meeting has luckily, yeah, has worked for everyone on this council. It's also right people to be able to. Give public comment, you know, at four o'clock at at a time that's, you know, can be convenient for them as well. But we have a new council member coming on who has a normal, has a day job that would hours to stick by. And so six o'clock is a lot more convenient and and works in her schedule as well. So that needed to be taken into account when we're thinking about all this going forward too. So. That this, and as a reminder, and I'm just about to say this. Under my mayor's report, this is the last city council meeting of the year, last meeting period of the year. We're not going to have a a work session next Thursday from from all of, from what I can tell right now, right, Scott?
Correct.
So the the it. And we haven't had a conversation about coming back into council. I know this is sort of a separate conversation. But we've just now allowed where you don't have to be, you can do a hybrid model. But next, that that first meeting of the year is a year where we 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 will be swearing in. You know, four council members at that time, and it would make sense for at least for those four council members to to be there if possible. So it, but we haven't really gone over what the criteria and all that stuff is going to be. I know we're right in the middle of a conversation, but it it sort of ties in with that. We haven't discussed any of it. Scott?
In terms of just protocol being in the meeting room?
Yeah.
So as of today, I mean, as you know, sometimes standards change in terms of L and I and protocols. Mask would be required at all times, regardless of your speaking or not. That would be the standard. We will put six-foot distancing in place for not only audience, but also council. And so that would be the expectation going forward until there's new health mandates or new guidance from L and I.
Okay. Dr. Mayor? So you're on mute?
Does that include also JazzCon, which is coming up the twentieth? Is that in person as well?
So each each boards and commissions are doing that transition, so they're kind of doing that on their own timeline. So if you've not heard anything differently, it would be in remote.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Then I think we've answered most of those questions. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen ten relating to council meetings. Then I think we've answered most of those questions. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen ten relating to council meeting times. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries unanimously. And I think we've answered all those questions. And so um, we will be meeting um at six o'clock on the first Thursday in January. Um, and I'm, don't know, uh, we don't need to know right this second on how, you know, how many of us are going to be there or not be there. But uh, like I said, it'd be nice if at least the four people who are on mute be sworn in are, are there on, on that first Thursday. Okay, let's go on to the next agenda item. Um, on first up on agenda item, as I just said, um, this is our last council meeting of the year and it holds um special meaning. Um, because this is the, the last meeting for Cynthia Pratt, our deputy mayor. And um Cynthia, you've uh been just my right and, you know, uh, go to person for such a long time. You're uh the longest consecutive deputy mayor in the history of Lacey by far. And so you've, you've um, there's a lot of history that you have broken here and, and made on the Lacey City Council in the twelve years that you have given back to your community and all the times, you know, time before that as well. Um, I just want to say how much I appreciate working with you and how much you meant to me, not only as, as an elected official, but as someone I can always, you know, bounce ideas off of and have, you know, we like, so we work hand in hand together for such a long time. Um, thank you so much for all you do. Uh, we're, we're, we all um have a, a formal uh celebration for Cynthia uh next Monday at five thirty at council chambers. So there's information about that. And if, you know, people want to attend at five thirty, we're going to do all the, uh, we have council chambers and we'll have masks on and all the things that we, we sort of talked about. Um, but we'll give now some people an opportunity to want to come by and, and say a few words um to Cynthia then. But um, thank you Cynthia. I just, I can't believe this is your last, this is your last meeting. It's, it's really shocking. I, it feels like we were just elected to the council and you snapped like that and it's been twelve years later. So um, time, time flies, but thank you for all you've given to Lacey.
So much. Um, yeah, time did fly, but um, and you know, deputy mayor just is work, but um it was nice to be able to back you up. So great.
Appreciate Cynthia. So uh, a couple other items under the mayor's report. I have two uh reappointments uh to the planning commission um with Eddie Bishop and also with um Daphne uh, uh Rex Lev. Um, and so I would like to make that as um one motion unless I see otherwise. I, I would move to reappoint them both to their second term uh on the planning commission. Is there a second?
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Obviously Eddie and, and Daphne uh, uh, have been really amazing on the planning mission. I know Carolyn wants to say a few words.
Well, I was going to say just what you said, so go ahead.
Yeah, they, they just, uh, they've been solid on the planning commission for a long time. And, you know, of course I've, you know, checking in with Rick and see how things are going on the planning commission because they're such an important part of, of what we do here in, in Lacey. And, and uh, they've been great contributors and uh, you know, it totally makes sense for uh me to reappoint them and um for them to continue their services to, to our community. So I'm, I'm enthusiastically supporting that. Any other discussion? Mike?
Being the, the topic is planning commission. I just uh wanted to thank them for their service, of course. Um, giving back to the city, citizens, uh, to their city. But also recognize, you know, even though Cynthia is leaving, um, you know, she loves this community and um she's genuine about it. And she's um worked super hard. That's what the commission, the planning commission does. And with her exiting, we gain a planning commissioner and our council will now have, now have a majority of planning commission, previous planning commission.
Is on the council.
Commissioners on it. And I think that's odd, that it, you know, recognizes their, their um commitment to their city that they love and, and representing everybody from top to bottom. So.
I, I hadn't put that together, but you're, you're right. And um, that does mean, uh, as we're talking about, uh, council member elect, uh, Robin, um, is going to be leaving the planning commission. So there will be an opening um on our planning commission. And we're pushing that information out here, here pretty quick. I just, I'm not sure if you want to chime in here, Rick, if you're, if you're listening. But uh, we just talked about uh earlier in the week or late last week about um getting that notice out to, for people to apply for the planning commission opening. So um, if it hasn't already gone out, gone out, then it will go out soon. Rick?
Yes, uh, we actually will have uh two openings on the.
Two openings, yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Eduardo Maldonado is going to be stepping down after this year, so we'll have two openings. Uh, we have the uh recruitment announcements out to the public and collecting applications. And uh, once we get a uh, a handful of applications in, we'll start setting up and coordinating the interview process with the, with the mayor uh to make a recommendation to council. Uh, so if you all have the opportunity to spread the word, you know, you always want to try to get as diverse and uh both uh from around the community as well as within the community, uh, a diverse uh group of planning commissioners, so if you spread the word and so we can get as many applications we can to select from.
So Robin, but Robin was with, within the U G A. What about Eduardo? Was he a U G A or?
Both positions are for uh within the city limits.
Okay.
Now we have a few positions that are unincorporated U G A filled, and these positions would be for residents that are within the city limits.
Within the city limits, it's a good call higher there. So any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to reappoint uh Eddie and Daphne uh to the planning commission for a second term. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thanks, Rick. So um, looks like we're going on to the standing uh general committees and the finance committee is up first, which I met uh back in November twenty third. We just uh had a big, long con- uh conversation about our, our reserve designations. And that's what we, we spent most of the time talking about um on that meeting. And then we also uh talked about the third quarter financial report, which really focused on the general funding expenditures and revenues. And although the Washington State and the city are seeing positive impacts uh from a fully reopened um plan, there are of course areas that have yet to return to pre-pand- pre-pandemic levels. Um, and so uh it'll, it'll cast a degree of economic uncertainty, but at this time, the impacts of the expiring extra unemployment, uh benefits, the eviction moratorium and the filby delinquency moratorium, that when they expire, we're still not a hundred percent sure all that's going to all clear up. For any, anyone listening today, um, who still um hasn't looked at uh the rental assistance or the uh utility assistance, please log on to uh C I dot Lacey dot W A B dot U S. Um, and right there on their website, well, there's instructions on to how to apply for those funds. And I know in Lacey, uh, we've gone through most of our funds, but the C S D still dispersion funds that is, is gone um through the county to C A C for this. And uh, we still, uh, you can still apply for those funds until they run out, but I know they're going quick. I just uh had a conversation with Commissioner Mahia uh yesterday. And she says the county's putting out about a million dollars a week, um, which is shocking to hear, to hear uh that, that they're actually going through that much. Um, if, and so, but uh obviously there's a kind of need out there. What's a little weird about it and so a discussion I, I just had with a constituent who um, who called me the other night. Um, it was a, uh, he has several rentals and of course one of his renters um is nine months in, in arrears. Um, and, and of course there's utilities that can go along with it too. Because when I start paying rent, some of the times I start paying the utilities and that always goes back on the landlord has to then uh pick that up. And so um, in the current law, as at least how we had it in Lacey, uh, the renter is the one that had to apply for the funds. The landlord couldn't apply on behalf of the renter. And so you see, there's a lot of landlords out there that wish they could apply where they try to convince their um renter to apply. But that doesn't necessarily always work because now they're way back in rent. The landlord's calling, you know, no, no one's picking up that phone when you're way back on rent. And so even if they let them know that, hey, there's rental assistance out there. So that plan wasn't perfect. Obviously you want to make sure there's some connection to COVID and you had to prove, be able to do that. But you know, we're really hoping there is uh some ability for landlords to be able to apply it for these funds as well. And so I think uh we're looking into that a little bit more. Commissioner Mahia had, had mentioned even yesterday that she thought that um the landlords could apply for um these, for these dollars. And I, that was a surprise to me. I, I, I haven't ever heard that before. And so I, Rick said he's going to actually follow up on that uh for us. So we need some clarification to see. I mean, that'd be great in this case. I, I just, I haven't ever heard. I always thought that it had to be the renter that initiated it. So um, hopefully we, if then it, it'd be great if that those, those rules have changed, but if not, I, I did point it out to Congressman Strickland that, you know, it'd be nice to get a change um in the law to allow that to happen. So um, that is my report. But uh council members, Stedman, you have the hands up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add one thing to that. Um, you know, a lot of businesses struggled through the pandemic and continue to do so. And one of the first things many of them did was not renew their business license, which then they can't apply for grant funding. Um, you know, and some of these grants were upwards of ten, twenty, five thousand plus grants, you know? And i- it's sad, you know, because that could have saved their business and they would still be around. Um, you know, so it, it's from top to bottom, um, you know, you, you, when you're, when you're strapped for money, you take it from the, the first things that you think aren't that important, they turn out to be the biggest things.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. You do have to be current, current on your business to apply those, uh, those funds. Uh, S B A still has a program out there for either ten or fifteen thousand dollar advance uh grant. Um, that doesn't have to be paid back. It's, it's either ten thousand or it could be up to fifteen thousand if you're in certain areas um that are low income areas. And so, but I know those funds expire at December thirty first. Because I've been seeing the S B A um ping me on it for my businesses. So if you haven't heard about that, um, you can probably reach out to the city Lacey um economic development apartment or in the uh E D C and they can help, help direct you in the right, right way. Okay, let's see. Let's go on to our next um, which is general government meeting.
So um, we, we met, uh, the, I, one agenda item was protocol for virtual meetings. And uh, we just passed the ordinance, so uh I have no uh report out.
Uh, community relations and public affairs committee.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we met on December sixth at eleven. Um, council members Cox and um Ed Conklin and myself were president. And it was the one agenda item. It was a commission on equity. Uh, everybody knows ordinance fifteen eighty one established this uh, this commission on equity. Um, they had three commissioners there. Um, everybody knows the Thelma Jackson pretty much or, or should, she's an amazing uh woman. But uh Commissioners Clay and Hedgewood were there giving us a review. And um, they had extensive um outreach and engagement with the company, uh, with the um community, excuse me. Um, just to see if there was interest and lo and behold, the, um, the community has a huge amount of interest in this commission. And um their work on, you know, bettering our policies and, and uh things top to bottom from the city when it comes to including everybody. Um, every resident from top to bottom. So now um, the, the staff was, we've directed staff to um provide the committee with materials to promote the commission and it's off and running. It sounds like it's shot out of the gate like a uh bunch of racehorses, but uh it's awesome. It's well, long, long overdue. And I think it's um going to be a great addition and just better um everything we do from top to bottom as a municipality.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Last is the transportation debate.
Uh, transportation met on December seventh, eleven o'clock. Uh, present were myself, council members, uh Cox and Stedman. And uh, we had our um state of the streets uh report. And uh, the, uh, you know, we, we, we basically went over all the different things that have happened uh to the roadways, uh, different maintenance projects that have happened. Uh, staff presented the twenty twenty one report, including, including the current quality of roads in the city, roadwork completed in twenty twenty one, uh, budget scenarios, uh estimated impacts on the city road networks for the, for the near future. Uh, we also followed up on the Lebanon street traffic calming update. Uh, staff provided an update on the Lebanon calming efforts, uh, voting period for the neighborhood, um, to approve or deny. Uh, the permanent installation of traffic calming barriers is still open. Um, and more than half of the thirteen votes received um are for the permanent installation of the barriers. Um, we, we need a sixty percent of the votes received uh have to approve the permanent installation to move forward. I suggested that we give them a little bit more time. This is just kind of an odd time of year to, to um, you know, expect an immediate response uh with, with all this happening uh in life. So uh, my suggestion was, you know, let's, let's double our effort to get as many people, you know, involved in voting as possible so that we can, you know, finally bring resolution to, to the situation, um, whatever that looks like. And uh, that is my report.
Uh, Councilor Stedman, you got a question?
Just a comment. So I talked to a couple of the residents, Rick Vermill, who was one of the um active residents there during that process. And I was shocked that his vote wasn't in. So um, he had reached out to me after the meeting and said that he had voted and he was engaging the other neighbors that do so. So there should be a lot more participation now.
Right. So now we're on to boards, commissions and committee reports. I'm up first. Um, the last mayor's forum um for the year was held in, in Tumwater. We actually met in person for the, for the first time since COVID. Um, and because it was uh the last meeting for three, you know, very pivotal mayors that are in, in Thurston County. Um, and so of course Pete Komet, at, you know, after thirty years of, of service, um, and um being the mayor since uh for the last uh eleven, twelve years where it's been, um, he's, he retired. And, and so uh, we were celebrating him. We um, and, and that's why he was hosting us there too. So we were at the um Heritage Distilling in Tumwater and their new building next to the S P C C's. Um, the, the distilling program is also run out of that. So that was, that was actually my first time there. I, I hadn't seen it yet. And it's a really cool place. I'm not sure if you, if you get a chance, everyone should go and, and check out that facility. Um, they're actually planning on having an amphitheater right next to it. It's in, it's in the plans and the, the next stage of development where they're going to be able to do some live music and some other things, which uh, I think it will be really great. And so it's a awesome spot. And the um Heritage Distilling was very accommodating and um it was, it's, it's, that building turned out very, very nice. And so um, anyway, so the Pete Komet, and then of course J W Foster from, from Yelm. Um, and all, all that he's given to Yelm. And I was just having a conversation with, with uh Scott about this earlier. Ju- losing J W is, is going to be a huge, huge loss for Thurston County. Because J W not only represented Yelm, but he had the full faith and trust of the other count, uh, cities in South County. And so it was, it was usually J W that was representing all of South County on, on boards and commissions. And um, and, and so he was very instrumental uh in, in making sure South County, um, first of all, is not, not left behind and not forgotten uh within Thurston County. But he was also very active and um, and, and brought his unique, you know, South County um experience. Uh, and, and it'll be very difficult to replace all those years that, you know, he's been just a stalwart for, for not only Yelm, but for, for all South County. And so uh, J W's will, will be very, very much missed. And then we forget the, the longest uh elected official um is the Coda's um mayor. And he, he's been uh on the, who's on the council in one way or the other between mayor. Um, and, and on the council for over thirty, thirty-five years, you know, longer than, longer than Pete. And so uh, he's been uh, you know, staking a little town to be Coda and put them on the map with Bu Coda uh every, every October. And uh, he's. And he's, you know, just and run that city as a strong mayor. So he's the one that has to sign every single check that comes out of Cota. His signature is on it. And that is going to be very difficult for them to replace him after all these years too. So it was a it was a really special mayor's forum where we all got to get together. And and the the chair of the county commission was stopped by to have some well wishes as well. And we we really reminisced a lot about, you know, all their times. And, you know, what was the biggest accomplishment you had? What's the thing you wish you could change? And we had a really great conversation about all that. So that is my report on the mayor's forum. The Transportation Policy Board met a week ago Wednesday. And I think that the one important item that I want to talk about here was the the Trails Plan Update, including the Grand Mound and Rochester feasibility study. So Paul Brewster presented information about the that Grand Mound Rochester Trail Feasibility Study, which was something that was funded funds that went through the T V B and explored that connecting Grand Mound, Rochester, and then the prepared tribes of the Shales Reservation. We think about how instrumental our art trails have been in in northern part of the county, you know, connecting the jurisdictions. It's they're a big part of of what we do to get around the makeup of our community. And so this would be a really big deal, you know, for for that part of the county. And so this feasibility study looked at several different options on where the trail could go. And it's sort of it's on its way through through its process. Then Paul also pivoted to the update of the regional trails plans, which explain how trail studies, attaining the right way and other steps lead to trail projects likelihood of moving forward in the next ten years. The plan update will include details of the projects that if a shorter horizon or a higher level updates to potential longer term trail projects or successes between the two thousand seven plan and the present plan. And we also talked about trail management and governance. This is always a really difficult thing when it comes to trails. We end up putting these trails in and they cross jurisdictional lines. And then we have to figure out, okay, who's responsible for what trail? And then do we we haven't really put money aside for the maintenance of those trails either. And so, for example, the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail is obviously a key connector for us, Lacey, Olympia, and hopefully in the future down to Tomwater, which is something that we've talked about in the Transportation Policy Board world for a very long time. Connecting that all the way down to Tomwater is not going to be easy. But we had brought it up during the Transportation Policy Board that with all the work we're doing on I five, we better include the feasibility of that trail connection down because it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. And if you don't include it with all the other I five work that we're doing right now, that trail will never happen. And it and it's weird where I'm not sure, you know, I I've taken that trail many times and it just dead ends. And you can't get down to Tomwater currently. It's it's impossible. You basically have to go all the way around down through Olympia, around the lake, and then you can sort of get over to Tomwater. And so this would be a a key connector to the three cities. And also it'd be a key connector to the Tomwater Historical Park that's down there. And that I know Tomwater has put some money in to to restore the old tower and everything. So if we can figure that part out, that will be a big, big change with more access down there and really showcase that. So that is my report. Turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
So Joint Animal Services Commission will meet on the twentieth where we are planning to pass the budget. So I don't have a report for that. LOT met in the evening of December eighth. And for the work session, we discussed the proposed alternatives to Capital Lake to Shoots Estuary Long Term Management, E I S. And LOT sent out a letter to the E I S consultants stating that the estuary option was the most beneficial for LOT's ratepayers. We also heard at the work session updates and had a discussion on the Juneteenth holiday, which later was passed in a consent agenda item. We talked about security improvements, cost of service, and then a discussion on the Technical Training Center to encourage more people to get involved in training for wastewater treatment. At the business meeting, the board authorized the executive director to, whoops, sorry about this. My thing keeps flipping off, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Port of Olympia for a potential purchase and sale agreement for the port owned property located at six oh eight and six twenty Washington Street Northeast in Olympia. We also authorized the award of a contract for the Security Improvements Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Construct Inc. of Tomwater, Washington, for the bid amount of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars, which includes Washington state sales tax. And just so you remember, I've talked about security incidents at the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, and they which have become more frequent and posing an increased risk to public health and safety and the security of the essential public facility. Security improvements are needed to better protect the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant and its associated grounds in downtown Olympia. And then lastly, for LOT, the board approved resolution twenty-one dash zero zero four and twenty-one dash zero zero five commending myself for my service at LOT, which actually was twelve years on that committee. Potential candidates in which I was part of, by the way, actually ended up selecting Jeffrey Johnston. And then it had to go through the full board for approval. Jeffrey is from ecology and has a background in air quality. And then then we met in executive session, talked about his qualifications. I I just can't say enough about it. He just sounds like one of the best candidates I've ever interviewed. And I just think he'll be just doing an excellent job with Orca. But for so that in order to approve him, because as I said, we were just interviewing him, we met as a special session on Monday, the thirteenth and to vote and approve and to offer him a contract. And that is my report out. So I'm very excited for Orca.
Is there anything else you'd like to say as your last report out for the city?
Only that I actually am really going to miss these two committees I've been on. I'm kind of a techie person. I like all the technical information that's given out, providing they're not so engineeringly linguistically confusing. But it's been just really interesting to find out about how we keep our wastewater clean and able to go into Bud Inlet, how we do reclaimed water. I that that's just been a learning experience that I've enjoyed. And I I've liked working with all the board members on that committee. And believe it or not, Orca is is just really interesting when you learn about how air quality can affect us and how we've tried, we've done a really good job recently to keep Lacey and Thurston County in attainment, which at one time we were not. And and also, the Dr. Hadley talks has been giving us information about how climate change kind of interacts with particular matter in the airstream and stuff about things. So that that is rather an important issue, I think. And I'm hoping that whoever gets into those two positions, particularly Orca, I think, will well, I I just think they'll they'll have a really interesting, but also an important job of being on the board.
Well, it's there, this, you know, I was having this conversation with Pete, you know, Pete, and along with yourself, who's been the chair and the vice chair of of LOT for all these all these years. They're losing two people who have all this all this experience at the same time. And and it's a it's a huge, actually a huge loss to lot because, as you know, it's very is very technical and it takes a little while to learn, get caught up to speed on all that stuff. And so you've been learning it for twelve years and same same with Pete. And so to to lose that, it's gonna be hard on LOT.
What people forget is that LOT, in order to, because these projects are so enormously large, they have to plan forty to fifty years in advance to come up with the funds in order to put on some of to upgrade all of these huge facility things that they're dealing with. And we got to take a tour recent, Pete and I, of the latest. And it was pretty spectacular watching it transition from just the beginnings up until where we were actually on the building and looking at pipes and stuff. So I mean, I I thought that was fun.
Well, thanks again for for all those years of service to not only St. Lacey, but to those intergovernmental boards and committees. Okay, let's see, next is Councilmember Cox.
I'd like to start by saying there is no greater volunteer on our council than the deputy mayor. Thank you, Cynthia, for all you've done. I have a very short report and a little bit longer report. The short report is out of Intercity Transit Authority when that last night. Our really, our only agenda item was to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Intercity Transit and the Amalgamated Transit Union Local seventeen sixty-five. And this is a three year contract that starts January one and will go through twenty twenty-four. We also learned, well, we got an update on how Intercity Transit responded to the major fire yesterday in downtown Olympia. It resulted in having to close down the Olympia Transit Center, reroute all the all the buses through downtown Olympia. And the the staff just did an amazing job of making that happen, getting people where they needed to go. And so it just shows, you know, once again, how fortunate we are to have such a well run transit organization in Thurston County. The Regional Housing Council met on December the eighth. Top of the meeting, we heard a presentation from Ted Kelleher from the Department of Commerce, who was giving us kind of an overview of the housing situation. And, you know, one of his points was that the, you know, economic indicators such as declining unemployment rates and rental rates that are rising but not totally out of control don't really give a true picture, you know, of what's going on in our our housing market. And he talked about, you know, how people's general sense of well being is in decline, especially for those who live on the margins. And that where the system is most broken is for people with fixed incomes who are actually being pushed out of their communities because they can no longer afford to live there. And he reported that for every one hundred dollars increase in rent, there's a corresponding in six percent increase in homelessness. So it's it's a it's a whole big cyclical thing and very complex. The Regional Housing Council agreed to send a letter to Port of Olympia Commissioners urging them to do all they can to make the purchase of the Oyo Hotel in Tomwater that was intended or has been proposed for use for senior housing to make that happen. There there are barriers to that. The federal government, the Federal Aviation Administration, gave this land around the airport to the port. And for any use of that land, one, it has to have some sort of revenue return for the port. And there's also prohibition on residential use. Well, they got around the residential use by having an in on that property. But there has to be an appeal to the F A A to allow for residential use on that end. We also discussed how revenue could be returned to the port. The hotel actually leases the land that it sits on, and it's a it's a forty-five thousand dollar a year lease. And we were told that, you know, this is actually pretty darn reasonable because it works out to less than one thousand dollars per unit for housing low income seniors. So more more to come on that. But the ball is back in the Port Commission's court on this. We also discussed a memorandum of understanding for committing ARPA funds for regional affordable housing projects and discussed a regional agreement on property acquisition. Staff is going to come back with recommendations on that. And got an update on the proposed countywide home fund. County Commissioners have had a public hearing on a draft ordinance that would create it. And it's expected to come, they're going to send it through the Regional Housing Council for us to review and comment. And then the final draft would be considered by Commissioners. We agreed to have a retreat with the Thurston Thrives Housing Action Team to discuss how we can work more closely with them. They have been, you know, eager to have more input. And I think from the Housing Council's point of view, these are the people who have the boots on the ground, who have a really good sense of the needs out there and valuable knowledge that should be shared with us. So hopefully, we can make that happen. We did have members of their affordable housing team come and meet with the Housing Council's Funding Committee just this just this week to talk about what they call the pipeline, where projects for a year, two, three years out are there's kind of a consensus agreement on that so that they can plan for these things. The people proposing them can get their funding lined up and make these things happen. So they're looking for a little bit more of a voice in that. More to be determined on that. And then finally, Interfaith Works and the Low Income Housing Institute are hosting the grand opening of what's now known as Unity Commons, which is the new homeless shelter on Martin Way and the permanent supportive housing that's going to be on the upper floors of that. The opening is set for eleven AM on December twenty first, and I think we're all invited to that. And this project is just a demonstration of how Olympia's Home Fund played, you know, a really significant role in what home funds can do in providing this kind of housing. That is my report.
You, Councilmember Greystein.
I have no report at this time.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. TRPC met early this month, December third. One of the things that I'll I'll start at the end of the meeting and move 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 to the front. We we said goodbye to J W Foster, who is the chair of was the chair of TRPC. And so kind of a sad moment, but also, you know, many, many years of service. And it's he is he has done a good job for us and and he's going to be moving on. So that was the end of the meeting. But we started with the what they call the the profile, which is part of the TRPC website. And what what the profile is, is it's an amazing amount of data that you can get on things like land use, population demographics, housing economics, employment, transportation, education, water, all these things that that happen in the community and statistics, statistical information on them. And you can you can get this all from the TRP website. As you know, TRPC does and sponsors and creates many, many, many studies that that help guide the policy that we create and many of the other jurisdictions. that, that help guide the policy that we create and many of the other jurisdictions here. And they make all that information public and readily available in a thing called the profile on their website. So definitely worth a look. And, and, and something new that's come to the profile is the racial equity section, which has demographics on population, household income, poverty, homeownership, household type, educational attainment, homelessness. This is a new section. So again, more information that you can use to, you know, make determinations on many things. Even, you know, things like where you would like to, to give some resources and things like that. Our next agenda item was about the Washington State Department of Transportation and their, you know, their intentions going forward with, with hybrid versus, you know, work from home. And in, in their survey, they, they found that thirty-six percent of the people wanted to, you know, work from home full-time. And the, the rest of them wanted some type of hybrid work to do. Starting, the, the most popular of the hybrid models was the three days at work, two days at home model. And then, you know, the, their, their policy is, is to continue efforts to ensure that telework and remote work are available to employees on an equitable basis, keeping in mind business needs and safety first, of course. So, but, you know, collective bargaining agreements take precedent in this, in this circumstance and situation. And they're just gonna, what they're saying is, hey, we're going to support telework to the greatest extent possible. You know, the only, in, in, in the areas that it's, that, you know, those people that can do it, which is about three hundred other employees. Now, obviously, you know, mechanics can't telework. And then my last report is the Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking, has moved its annual meeting or annual workshop that was to be held in January two, February tenth at five thirty. And you can get more information there about that from WTP.org, Washington Trafficking Prevention dot org. And that is my report.
You, now onto Councilmember Seven.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report, but I just want to, of course, start with Cynthia and say it's been quite the ride. I sure enjoyed serving with you. You know, when I first got on this council, I was looking forward to serving with Ken Alf, you know, past city attorney. You know, I got to serve with Virgil Clarkson, you know. And then that brings me to JW and Pete Komet. Great guys, talk about community involvement there. They are the cities that they live in, they reflect the people that are there, just as much as you do Cynthia. JW, I wore my Marine T-shirt today in his honor. You know, like Virgil, he served in Marine Corps and Army, and nothing would be complete after the Army Navy game without me saying, go Navy, beat Army. Sorry, Ed, it happened this year. But you know what? We're all on the same team, whether you're Army, Navy, or, you know, Tomwater, Lacey, or Olympia, or on this council. You know, we all want the best for our families and friends in our community. And essentially, that's what I want to end with Cynthia. She wants the best for everybody. She's got a heart of gold that is, you know, they broke the mold with you. And you give and give and give, you know, and it's awesome. And you'll be missed, so. No report, but I had.
Yeah, yeah, she's, now she's going to be a pain on the other side poking us all the time.
That's okay. We need constant reminders, right? Thank you so much, Cynthia.
Then last up is Councilmember Cogle.
I have no report. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone. Well, just like that, we're at the end of our last council meeting. But of course, work's not quite done yet. We're going to adjourn to a work session real quickly, just to go over our federal legislative agenda review. And it's going to be real quick, but Malcolm, you got something?
Just, yeah, lastly, thank you for your service, Cynthia. Your lot reports and your clean air quality reports were absolutely scary with details. Just every three weeks, I'm like, wow, this is going to be good, so thank you.
Thanks. I do want to say that JW was excellent on TRPC, having had to, the opportunity to work with him. And so I'm pleased that we are mentioning how great he was.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'd be remiss, and I, I did cover this in my, my mayor's report and I should have, or even earlier on. We also have two Port of Olympia Commissioners where this was their last year as well. Now, Bill McGregor, who really represents this, this district, Lacey, Lacey was in his district. And Bill is just one of the most amazing guys I've ever met. And talk about giving and giving and giving and giving. Now he's going on and he's, he's actually the, I mean, our district governor for, in Rotary, which is really, really cool. And so he can be able to go to every single Rotary in, within the district, which goes up into British Columbia. And so I couldn't think of anyone better to represent service above self than Bill McGregor, who has represented the Port of Olympia very well, you know, extremely well. You, you forget that he spent his entire basically career working for ports. And so he did all that, you know, as it's, you know, on the executive level of ports before he actually became a port commissioner. And so he had just a wealth of expertise that he brought. And we were very lucky to have him represent our district here. And I was in, you know, Lacey's a big part of it. And of course, they, during his tenure with both DJ, and DJZ is the other one, who's, who, this was her last meeting as well. I was able to call in during the public comment and, and wish them both very, wish them well and thank them for their, their service. And under, with both of them, they were able to bring the first project, port project to the city of Lacey, northeast Lacey. And, you know, that was quite accomplishment to have Lacey being representative with some real estate action here in northeast Lacey. So I, I wish them the best and thank them for their service. And so, but, you know, with, with Bill in particular, he had spent so many years working for, as a port commissioner. And so it's just a really nice bill to say thank you to both of them. And they both serve the constituents very, very well. So with that, we're going to adjourn to a work session. Everyone out there, if you have a safe and happy holidays, and as always, keep it classy, Lacey. Let's wait a couple of minutes. Yep. What, what did you say, Mike?
Yes, I just confirm that we're going to stay right here and just take a five.
Yeah, let's just take a, just a quick five-minute break. And so right now it's five thirty-five, we come back at say even five forty, we'll re-adjourn. So, see you soon. Everyone stay safe out there.
And just want to start out by Joel sends his sincere apologies for not being able to make it tonight. Unfortunately, had a family commitment, as Shannon mentioned. And so I will be covering his portions of the presentation as well as my own. So I'm going to go ahead and get right into the PowerPoint here. Hopefully I have share screen permissions. One second. Great. So wanted to just kind of give you an overview of what we're planning to talk about tonight. And Mayor Ryder, I will try to be brief, but there is a lot to cover. Whoops, and it looks like I'm actually on the wrong slide here. So we're going to talk about your twenty twenty-one successes and an update on those successes as we still have some of those pending at the moment. Get into the bipartisan infrastructure bill, talk about the Build Back Better Act. That is Congress's, or excuse me, congressional Democrats and the White House's two trillion dollar social spending investment package that they have been debating for several months. Offer a twenty twenty-two preview on some of the major issues we're in, thinking we're going to see. And then, as Shannon mentioned, wrapping up with the city's draft twenty twenty-two federal agenda. So again, wanted to provide an overview of the city's successes and advocacy's efforts over the last year. You know, the first year of a presidential administration is always particularly busy in Congress. This is certainly not, has certainly been the case with the Biden administration. Although I would probably argue it has been one of the busiest I have certainly ever seen in terms of legislative action in Congress. And I think we can chalk that up to him taking office in the middle of a global pandemic. So, you know, we'll get into some of the bigger legislative events of the first year, the Biden administration. But between the COVID relief bill early in the year, the infrastructure investment package, the return of earmarks after a ten-plus-year hiatus, and then efforts to pass the Build Back Better Act, there has certainly been ample opportunities for the city to secure federal funding, but also to advocate for and help shape some of these packages. So first off on this list, you'll see congressionally-directed spending. And I'm personally excited to talk about these. It's the return of earmarks after they've been gone for ten years, as I mentioned. They were banned about ten years ago after some pretty not great stories that the public saw. Some may remember the infamous bridge to nowhere in Alaska. And they just, they decided to kind of stop the practice, given sort of some potential for misuse. So after a significant number of reforms, including increased transparency, which came in the form of actually posting all of the earmark requests, or excuse me, congressionally-directed spending requests online, limiting the folks that were actually able to request them to local governments and nonprofits. They are back and with a new name, congressionally-directed spending. You'll hear me say earmarks a lot. I think for those of us who have been involved in this world, it's a little hard to switch and start talking about them as congressionally-directed spending. It also doesn't quite roll off the tongue the same way that earmarks do. So just to give you kind of an idea of the process here, and Shannon will be familiar with it because it was a little chaotic as they were trying to set this up. Each congressional office solicited projects. You know, and generally, we were told that the maximum amount we could request was three million. That came down a little bit more to in the two and a half million range. The offices all took those projects that they had received, went through a very robust internal vetting process, eliminated them, or eliminated a lot of what they had received, and then made formal submissions to the appropriate appropriation subcommittee. And then those subcommittees further vetted the projects and removed more. And this, you know, as often is the case with federal funding, there is much more demand than there was available funding to go around. You know, earmarks, they are not unlimited earmarks in the appropriations bill. They're actually limited to one percent of all discretionary funding within the budget. So there was a need to, yeah, eliminate some to stay within that threshold. So before I get into these earmarks too a little bit, I did want to quantify this a little bit. You'll notice that the dollar figures there are in yellow, and that is because they are still pending request. Congress failed to pass a FY twenty-two appropriations bill prior to the end of the fiscal year on September thirtieth. So they are currently operating on a stopgap measure, continuing resolution that ends on February 18th. At this point, we would expect them to pass it probably pretty close to that deadline. They like these artificial deadlines and they like to go right up to the last minute to get it done. So at that point, it would probably be a couple of months before the funding would sort of filter down to the city. So with that being said, you'll see two earmarks on here at the top for the Veterans Hub. This is for an accessibility project. This would be the installation of an elevator at the Veterans Hub to help folks get up to the top, from the bottom of the top floor there. And also some technology enhancements that would help with the intake process for volunteers as they're assisting veterans. So we were able to secure a $500,000 earmark from Senator Cantwell on the Senate side and a $500,000 earmark for the same project on the House side with the help of Congresswoman Strickland. Now, just to explain this a little bit to, under the old earmark era, the would, if you had a project that was in both the House and Senate, they would be added together. You would get that total. For most of this year, we had been hearing from congressional staff that that would not be the case, that you would only get one of them and basically would be the higher dollar figure that you would end up getting. But, you know, just in the last couple of months, we've been hearing the opposite from congressional staff, which they're telling us now that you could get that full $1 million, those tied together. So we've been talking with your staff a little bit to make sure that that funding could be utilized. We've been communicating with the congressional offices too. This is one of those things that's gonna have to be worked out prior to February 18th, when they eventually come together and pass a final appropriations bill. But bottom line, worst-case scenario, so to speak, would be that you end up with $500,000. The best-case scenario is we end up with a million. And I think that's probably the more likely scenario that you end up getting the million, but time will tell on that and we're gonna continue to be talking with the congressional offices. Below that, I did want to mention submitted projects. So Congresswoman Strickland was able to insert $6 million for the College Street Safety Project within the House passed Invest Act. And the House Invest Act was not the appropriations bill. Instead, it was the House's version of the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And the difference on the House side was that it contained earmarks, where the Senate version didn't. So the largest earmark that Congresswoman Strickland got for her district was the $6 million for College Street. That was included in the Invest Act. It was sent over to the Senate. The Senate is 50-50. Compromises had to be made, unfortunately. Basically, the Senate said, thank you for this. We're gonna go ahead and take out all of the earmarks, make significant changes to the Invest Act and call it the bipartisan infrastructure bill. So unfortunately, that $6 million that Congresswoman Strickland was able to get into that House passed Invest Act did not end up coming to fruition. But in talking with her staff, they are very committed to supporting College Street into the future, either through grant funding or congressionally-directed spending. Below that, grants. You received a $1 million EDA grant from, for the Makerspace to purchase advanced manufacturing equipment. This is one that we spent a lot of time talking to congressional offices about. They were very excited about the Makerspace. Your staff, I know how difficult EDA applications can be, and they put in a ton of time to get their application really solid, and the EDA took their time to review it. We certainly had members of Congress calling over there trying to get it through. And yeah, bottom line, secured that $1 million, which was great to see. The last two items on there, the American Rescue Plan, or ARPA. Lacey received $6.8 million in that through flexible, or for the Flexible Coronavirus Relief Fund. We coordinated really closely with the National League of Cities on that. And throughout the congressional action on ARPA, we were really excited for the most part at how the formula ended up on that. And yeah, again, getting the city nearly $7 million in flexible relief funding. Last up on that list, and we're gonna talk more about this on some of the preceding slides, the infrastructure package, $1.2 trillion for that, which represents significant opportunities for the city, which I'll get into here in a moment. So lots of acronyms floating around for the infrastructure bill. It was called the BIF for a while, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Framework, the BIB, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill. And they finally landed on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, or IIJA. And as I said before, it's a $1.2 trillion investment in our nation's infrastructure. It is the largest investment since the creation of the national highway system in the 1950s. And what we, you know, we saved 550 billion in new spending, and this is over five years. The reason we refer to it as new spending is the other 550 billion was part of a five-year authorizing bill for highway programs that Congress has to pass every year, or excuse me, every five years regardless. So they use that authorizing bill as sort of the baseline for this infrastructure bill. So they would have likely spent 550 billion regardless. Basically, what they did is they added, you know, they doubled it and ended up augmenting a lot of the sort of legacy grant programs and formula dollars, and then also creating some new ones with that $550 billion. You know, the big winner here, and he's up there in the upper-left-hand corner, Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg. He is gonna be, his department's gonna be administering this. And he went from having three competitive grant programs that he as secretary really had oversight on and was able to make the final decision to now having over 23 different competitive grant programs. So the secretary will ultimately have a decision on where that funding is actually dolped out across the country. So again, these are just kind of, these are just top-line numbers. We'll get into this a little more. But you can see, I mean, it's pretty massive investments. It's very exciting for those of us who have worked in the infrastructure space to see these levels of funding. Certainly, I didn't think that we would. One second here. Okay, so going a little deeper on some of these, I want to talk about the competitive grant programs. So I divided these into existing grant programs and new competitive grant programs. So on the existing competitive grant programs, you have $8 billion for the Infra Program. Again, this is over five years. Traditionally, this program has had about $1 billion every year. So that's a $3 billion increase over the five-year span of the IIJA. Infra Program is mainly targeting freight mobility projects. These are projects that tend to be over $50 million, and the grants can be very large too, depending on the size of the project. FTA's New Starts, this is also a huge increase, about double what we've seen in the past for this. And this is a program that can help fund mega projects. Usually, not usually, excuse me, it is directed at high-capacity transit. So it focuses on new transit corridors via bus rapid transit or light rail. It's been used by communities that may be pursuing a mega project to help pay for the mass transit component. Next up on that list is the Raze, Build, and Tiger Program. This is a very popular program, and you might be wondering why there are three names for it. Well, that's because every administration since its creation during the Obama administration has named it something differently. And in case you're also wondering, because DC loves acronyms, yes, every single one of those is an acronym. I am not gonna try to tell you what they are. But the Tiger Program, it was referred to as the Tiger Program under the Obama administration, billed under Trump administration, and Raze under the Biden administration now. And this is a really flexible pot of funding. Usually, it can, well, it can fund rail projects, it can fund road projects, it can fund pedestrian projects. Grant awards tend to be in the 15 to 25 million dollar range. I think the average is about 15.8 million. Traditionally, it's either been funded at 500 million a year or 1 billion a year. So that's 7.5 billion over the five years. Also, it's about a 60% increase over what we've seen over the previous five years. The next one, the existing grant programs, the Transportation Alternatives Program. This is actually one that runs through the TRPC and can help fund trails, bike facilities, pedestrian facilities, $6.5 billion for that. That's a 63% increase from what it has historically been. So there is gonna be ample funding, additional funding for TRPC to kind of dole that funding out to local projects.
David, so are you saying that TRPC is gonna receive a 63% increase? Is that across the board like that?
My understanding is yes. And so it's a 63% increase at the top level. It could come down a little bit, just administrative costs and whatnot. But it is, it's a significant increase and they're gonna have, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of opportunities there, for sure. And no, they're not getting 6.5 billion. Yeah, I should clarify that too. That's nationwide. But yeah, 63% increase. It should lose some transport.
And the TAP program is usually was the least-funded program out of the three that we, that come through, Transportation Policy Board and TRPC.
Yeah, and that's, it's one of those ones, as I mentioned, I'm particularly excited about because it is, you're right. It's traditionally pretty underfunded. So to see that kind of increase is great. Awesome. So moving up to the new competitive grant programs. So those existing grant programs, I think those have been around for, you know, several years. The new competitive grant programs are particularly exciting. So there is a new mega projects grant program, and I mentioned that because of potential I-5 improvements in the future. $5 billion for that specifically for mega projects. And these are projects that are, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in cost. They've never had a mega projects grant program. So pretty great to see able to access, you know, potentially access that funding for something that may come to fruition on I-5, knowing that they're not quite ready for that, but it is a five-year bill. Similar to that Bridge Replacement Grant Program. Bridges have been historically difficult to find funding for in the federal space. And they have created not only a competitive grant program for that, but there's also a, there's a formula component to this as well. So the states will be receiving funding that is supposed to go to repairing or replacing bridges as needed. Safe Streets for All, this is a new grant program that aims to fund projects that reduce crashes and fatalities, especially for cyclists and pedestrians. You know, one that I kind of kept my eye on for potentially College Street. Healthy Streets Program, this is one of the, sort of the green components that came into this bill. It actually targets projects that can basically mitigate urban heat islands. So urban heat islands, you know, an area that is warmer than the immediate area around it because of buildings that may block wind or pavement that is absorbing heat. It is supposed to mitigate that and help to improve air quality, those sort of things. The last one, or the next one there, the Reconnecting Communities Grant Program, this is an interesting one. When they built the interstate system in the 1950s, they kind of plowed through a lot of communities. You know, this is a, this is the case for a lot of communities on I-5. This grant program is for projects that would mitigate that, essentially mitigate transportation facilities that have separated communities. So it could be something like a freeway cap, pedestrian crossing, those things of that nature. The Railroad Crossing Elimination Program is exactly what it sounds like, and actually longtime championed by Senator Cantwell. There's $3 billion for that. Senator Cantwell has had a standalone bill for this program for a number of years. And the language made it into the IIJA. And again, just what it sounds like, helping communities eliminate aggregate rail crossings. Electric Vehicle and Other Alternative Infrastructure Program. So like the Bridge Replacement Program, there's a competitive grant component to this, but also a formula-based program to this. So the states will be receiving money to basically, you know, help build out some of this alternative fuel infrastructure. The feds are very serious, the Biden administration is very serious about transitioning us to alternative fuels, but they need the infrastructure in place. So this program can help build EV charging stations, but other alternative fuels too, so like a hydrogen station. And then particularly important for our state, culvert removal and replacement. There was no grant program at all, or no, that was able to, you know, access federal dollars for this. $4 billion for culvert removal and replacement. So that is sort of the competitive pot. And these, again, there are, there are a ton of, we tried to, when we were putting this together, pull out the ones that we thought would be of the most interest that the city could, you know, likely at some point apply for. But there is more. Formula increases, huge increases to formula funds for our, for transportation. So states are set to receive a 30% increase in highway formula funds. That means $5.3 billion for Washington. States will also receive a 34% increase in transit formula dollars. That's nearly $2 billion for Washington. Drinking Water and Clean Water State Revolver Fund, this flows through the Department of Ecology. Usually, it has been a program that provides low-interest loans to water infrastructure projects for municipalities and other local governments. But they stipulated that 49% of the funding has to be used for grants, which I know is welcome news for a lot of communities. And then you can see Energy Efficiency Block Grants and Weatherization Assistance Programs, huge increases for that too. And just down here, some of the other competitive grant programs. EPA Brownfields, 1.5 billion for that. That helps communities remediate brownfield sites. Broadband deployment is getting a $46 billion. Western Water Infrastructure, $8 billion. That is obviously specifically for western states, but it really targets kind of the larger water infrastructure projects, hundreds of million total projects. More than that dollar figure. So that's kind of the IIJA. I'm gonna pause there because I kind of threw a lot at you to see if there's any questions on that. But I mean, the bottom line is, and I said at the top, this is the largest investment in our country's infrastructure since the creation of the highway, interstate highway system. It's very exciting. The Biden administration is gonna want to get this funding out quick. I mean, as quick as they can, but it is a five-year bill. So, you know, we'll definitely position the city to make sure that you all can take advantage of these new funding streams.
If you could stop sharing your screen just real quick. Deputy Mayor, you're on mute.
When you talked about broadband deployment, what does the deployment exactly refer to? I mean, I kind of know we need broadband, but I wasn't quite sure of the terminology.
Yeah, so this is, I should have said this at the top. That was Joel's slide that I'm gonna punt a little bit on and get back to you on that. But basically, it's, a lot of it is formula dollars to the states to basically dole out money to local communities that are looking at installing broadband in it. So it really, it targets rural communities for the most part. Part of it is formula, a good chunk of it is formula, but a good chunk of it is also competitive grants. And again, it's for those communities that have done studies that are prepared for broadband, and the deployment is basically construction of it.
So what's really interesting about that broadband discussion is that also we're seeing all these new dollars come for broadband because obviously COVID taught us that a lot of us are, like on this meeting, need broadband access, and especially in the rural areas that they don't have it. But the problem that we're seeing is that there's no prescription on who's gonna take the lead in any given state county. Right? Is it, is it the MPO? Is it, is it the?
Private sector, or is it?
Sector, is it, is it the port? Is it? You know, and so we're, as part of the First Regional Plan Council's legislative priority to the state, we're asking for clarification on who, who should be taking the lead in these circumstances. Because you can, you can make a case for, you know, several different agencies. I mean, it would make sense that MPO would be it, but not, you know, MPO doesn't cover everything.
And candidly, the feds haven't really prescribed that either. They've kind of get left it up to the states to figure it out, basically. And to your point, the state has not quite figured that out yet, exactly. But yeah, more money coming for that, and I think they're probably gonna figure it out pretty, pretty quick, because they're gonna need to.
Councilor Cox?
Wanted to ask about the Bridge Replacement Funding and whether you think the Nusquale Bridge Project might have a chance at a good-sized chunk of that?
Absolutely. Yeah, 100% it would. And that's exactly the type of project that it's targeting. It's all bridges. I mean, it's large, it's small, et cetera. For the Nusquale Bridge too, that mega projects account would potentially qualify for sort of the larger corridor improvements. But yeah, the bridge, again, the state could do it with formula dollars. I, off the top of my head, I don't remember how much formula funding they're getting, but also the competitive grant program would be an opportunity. Right now, all we have on these grant programs is sort of the legislative text over the coming months. DOT is gonna be putting those into Notice of Funding Opportunities, they call them. And it'll give us more specifics and kind of what the framework looks like for how the grant process will work. But the bottom line is, yes, absolutely, Nusquale Bridge is something that would qualify for that. But the bottom line is yes, absolutely. A Nisqually Bridge is something that would qualify for that.
Malcolm?
I saw that there's a railroad crossing elimination line item there. Have you ever seen that in, in practice or how does, have you ever seen it?
That is a, that is a brand new, you mean like the actual construction of it, eliminating?
Yeah, like what does that look like?
Yeah, so it could be like a rail overpass, let's say, like they would, they would get rid of the at-grade crossing, which is, you know, it's at grade with the road and construct an overpass basically. So the train could go up or down, or it could take the road down through a tunnel. That type of thing. That's usually what, or at least what I've seen projects do.
And we have a, we have a ton of them that need to happen along, along the corridor between, actually between here and Seattle. There's so many at-grade crossings and our Lakewood complains about this all the time, right?
Yeah.
Completely shuts off the.
Oh, totally. And that's, yeah, I mentioned, I mean, that was, it was Senator, it's Senator Cantwell's bill that she's had for several years. I mean, they literally just kind of took that text and threw it into the IIJA. And yeah, I mean, that's, that is exactly why it was written and certainly going to be opportunities for that too. And that's another one. You know, we'll be looking for the NOFO on that to see how they structure it. But it's certainly, you know, any at-grade crossing, I think is going to, it's going to be pretty broad eligibility for it.
So let's, let's go into, let's go right into our Lacey, our five that we're asking. And I guess really important is, is there any connections that we can immediately take from, from this transfer, this infrastructure package into our priorities?
You're talking about the agenda.
The agenda, you know, public electric vehicle charging and we're not going to ask for more money, right? I mean, there's, there's, or they just aside a bunch of money. We're just going to ask for, I'm not sure why that's in there for example.
Or within the agenda, you mean?
No, our, our five priorities, wherever it is. Or four priorities, five priorities.
If I, if I may, you know, one thing we want to identify what our priorities are for the city, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're only going to pursue one avenue. We would certainly look for all of the opportunities based on the pots that are presented as part of this infrastructure package. It doesn't just mean it'd be exclusively restricted to a congressional, a directed spending request.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, we try to keep it broad. And I think, you know, we tried to identify what accounts we may be going in for on some of those, but we're going to be, it's sort of all of the above. And, you know, definitely that's an opportunity, the new EV grant program, congressionally-directed spending is also an opportunity. And they can be combined too. I mean, just because we go for the EV program doesn't mean that we're not going to go for a congressionally-directed spending request.
So do we want to go over that part right now?
We can, if you'd like. Yeah. Hang on. Switch gears here. Share my screen again. Great. So yeah, as you were talking about kind of the five priorities we have here, and that fifth one is still on there, the Lacey Veterans Service Hub Accessibility Enhancements. We are leaving that on there for now because we're not expecting it to, you know, the appropriations bill to pass until February 18th, and we're going to continue to kind of press on that. So we want to leave that on there for now.
Do you know what the cost of that, I mean, it looks like we may get a million dollars. What's the overall cost of that project?
Originally it was about 500,000. I'm going to look to Shannon for this. The request was for 500,000, which I'm assuming has gone up some being that we submitted this in March. So it seems likely that that has gone up. And then the funding is pretty flexible. So we're also going to be looking for some opportunities to kind of spend outside of that, outside of what we had originally planned. But Shannon might be able to shed a little more light on that potentially.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Mr. Hodges. So yes, we identified about $500,000 of improvements and enhancements that could be made for accessibility. And one of the largest requests is going to be an elevator that would connect the second floor with the actual hub. So that way the VA would be connected to the hub and the hub would be better connected to the VA. Currently, if you go to the site, you have to exit the building and to be ADA accessible, you have to walk all the way around to go down to the hub or go up to the veteran outstation. So that would be a significant line item as far as that process, that request. When we originally started this, as Mr. Hodges indicated, you know, our assumption was that our request would be for $500,000. And now, you know, it's, it's looking more like there could be an opportunity for additional funding. So we are working with the Lacey Veterans hub to identify what might be the best use for those funds moving forward.
Thanks, Shannon. Appreciate that. So yeah, these other projects, the College Street Corridor Safety Improvement Project, we have that at the top. Again, as I mentioned, the earmark that Congresswoman Strickland has or had in the House passed Invest Act, $6 million. We're going to be pursuing, you know, more congressional directing spending for that, and that will hopefully be successful this year. But also looking at some of those grant programs, I mentioned the safety program that helps with pedestrian and bicyclist safety. Even potentially a Raze Grant, although we need to kind of talk through that a little more. And, you know, there's maybe one or two other grant programs we could look at for that, but there's definitely ample opportunities. And what we're basically going to be doing in the next few months is waiting for those NOFOs to come out. So we can see which one is going to align the best with sort of what needs to happen there. Next up on that list is the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program. So just like it sounds, you know, the city is in the process of working to eliminate septic, excuse me, septic systems in the city. And this would just augment sort of the investments you've already made. And specifically probably going to be targeting a congressionally-directed spending request for that. This last year, we've done an analysis on some of the earmarks and septic to sewer conversion has been particularly popular. At least as we kind of look at the earmarks that were made across the country. Next up, the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center in the Depot District. So that is not quite ripe for a earmark, or excuse me, a grant funding request. There is a potential for maybe an earmark for some design money potentially, but we wanted to put that on the agenda because we really want to formalize it a little bit and start talking to the congressional offices to kind of set the stage for when we are ready to go for grant funding for that or an earmark for actual construction. We already talked through the electric vehicle infrastructure improvements. And again, that would be targeting one, the grant program, potentially even, and I think we need to kind of talk to the state about this. You know, what the state funds are going to look like on that front, the formula dollars that they're going to receive. But also again, for that, a congressionally-directed spending request, which in our analysis of FY22's earmarks that made it into the bill have also been very popular with members of Congress and the committees that funded several electric vehicle infrastructure projects across the country. So I'm sorry, was there a question?
Nope.
Okay, thought I heard something. So on the policy positions, this is the Support for a National Housing and Homeless Outreach Strategy. This has been on the agenda for a while. We're keeping it on here and in the presentation, we can go back to it. I talked a little bit about the Build Back Better Act, which includes a lot of funding for affordable housing. I would say it's largest investment in affordable housing in the country's history. And I can go into some of the details in that once we go back to the presentation, but support for the Puget Save Our Sound Act, this was something that was sponsored by Congressman Heck. Congresswoman Strickland has taken up the mantle and is sponsoring that also now with Congressman Kilmer. And again, this is bringing in federal support, federal resources to help clean up the sound. And then support for the I-5 Corridor from Tomwater to Mountains Road, which includes the Nisqually Bridge. Putting that on there, you know, knowing that project is probably a little ways off, still somewhat in the planning stages, but it's a five-year bill. There's going to be opportunities, you know, for funding in the future. And we also just want to make sure that we're talking to the congressional delegation about it to make sure that they know that it's an upcoming need and going to be a, you know, likely a mega project. The Support for the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, this is a, it's not a new program, but it's actually only been funded for the last couple of years. And basically it helps fund projects that help with quality of life for military families. So that can be for military communities, either on base or off base. The first year that they had this program, we saw a lot of funding for go-to communities like Lacey that live, you know, that are outside of a military base, but have a pretty high military family population. And, you know, again, it can fund things that are supposed to help, it's pretty broad, supposed to help with quality of life for families. So things like a YWCA, those have been funded, community centers, libraries, et cetera. Now, the second year that we saw it, this last year, it actually only funded projects primarily on military bases. So there was somewhat of a shift there. And that's one thing we're going to be wanting to talk to the Pentagon about and also the congressional offices. You know, because I think the intent certainly was not in funding this to only fund projects on military installations.
Okay. Is there any questions? Can you stop sharing your screen with them?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any, any questions? Okay. Thanks, David. Appreciate it. I won't know yet if the National League of Cities is going to have their conference in March in person or not, until we go down the road. Obviously, if it does, we'll, we'll connect and set.
Yeah, totally. It sounds good.
Mike McMayor, fine, eh? It's awesome that we're getting some real money and investment in America, again, our infrastructure. Having said that, keep in mind, there's going to be a whole nother generation or two of people that need to build it and educated workforce, skilled workforce. So. What's that?
Yeah, it's a good question. We, we have all these dollars now accessible to do infrastructure, but we don't necessarily have the workforce to do it. Has that been contemplated at all?
Yeah, this is something Senator Murray talks a lot about, actually. And it's not just, it's like in all spaces. And Deputy Mayor Pratt was talking about this with wastewater infrastructure too, that they're, the workers aren't there. And that's something definitely Congress is talking about. Build Back Better Act does have funding for workforce training, things like that. But it's more than that, right? Because the people aren't there necessarily. The training can come, but we got to get the people there. And that's something Congress is definitely talking about. They are going to be slow with it for sure, but it's something on their radar for sure.
Anything else from council? Thanks for your time, David. Appreciate it.
Yep, take care.
Thank you.
We've reached the end of this agenda of our work session. So I will, everyone have a happy holidays and we'll see you on the other side. Thanks again, Deputy Mayor, for all you've done for the state of Lacey and our community. We'll see you.